percentage GPA is usually helpful for parents to understand, oh, it's not like everyone is going to get a four in every assignment. That is the exceptional beyond, because it is only the those top seven GPA percent.
And I don't think this is the final one either. I mean, there were issues that were picked up at the GRC SU meeting. I want to say maybe the July or the August meeting that we had, but one of the other complaints was that the B minus was a 79 or possibly 78. So the whole, one of the wait, yeah, that's a C plus, that's not a B minus. So there's some adjustments that need to be done in here. And I think this was the first crack at it and, you know, but
You want to ask any questions? Anyone on the phone have any questions, comments? Thank you, Lisa. Um, my name is discussion action. Evening, Louis.
Good evening. Last, the, the only thing I have to discuss is food service balances. Um, I'm looking at the packet, packet now. It doesn't look like it made it into the packet though. Did anybody receive that?
No.
No, Louis.
Okay. Um, so pretty much what we just wanted to discuss was, uh, right now, um, food services, we're operating under the summer food program, which is allowing all students to eat for free, both breakfast and lunch. Uh, it doesn't matter if they're free and reduced or not. And that's going to be available, uh, from now until December 31st. Uh, so that's the same program that we operated under, uh, during the whole COVID time. Uh, so it's, we're an open, we're an open site student. Any student can come whether they're going to school or not. Uh, so I just wanted to give the board an update on that and see if there was any questions regarding that.
I guess not, Brad.
Okay. Um, so then the other piece is, and we're going to be talking about this more at the SU board meeting. Uh, but we've been tracking the outstanding food service balances, which we provided to the board at previous meetings, and we had been trying to collect those for quite some time. Now, at this point, the food service balances are quite old. Um, they, they, they go back to prior to March when school was open. And, uh, they go, uh, some of them go back weeks or months from there, and some of them even maybe years. Um, we've talked about this in previous board meetings with the difficulty, uh, that we have trying to collect these balance, some of these unpaid balances. Uh, so what we're discussing at, at the board meetings is to see whether the board, uh, has any interest in, uh, clearing out all of these food service balances and wiping the slate clean, starting everybody with a zero balance. Uh, like I said, all meals are free until December, so starting January 1, everybody would have a zero balance. Uh, we currently have approximately 19,000 in outstanding food service balances.
Louis, I had you muted.
Oh.
Louis, we, we have a question from that.
Okay.
What do you think about the money amount?
Uh, we have a total of $19,000 approximately across the whole SU. Um, Wells and Middletown met and they did decide to, to forgive their balances. Uh, their balances were approximately $1,600. Uh, Rutland Towns portion is approximately $5,400. And then the remaining is Corey Valley, and they meet next week.
Are we talking about this elsewhere just on the floor, just this?
On the floor. I mean, because I'm mentioning specifically manager, I think, Paul.
But is, is he saying that it's going to be covered by the grant?
No, $5,400 is, is just a debit.
And he didn't want to.
Not all of us.
Yeah. Need the cost or anything.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, of course, we start cleaning slate.
Um, of course, there's two, the biggest problem is if we don't get them wrong, it's $5,400. Um, I know we go above and beyond to make sure that the children or families that can't afford it have the application so they can get help with this. Um, $5,400 is still a huge amount, and I personally if you say, okay, we're going to wipe this slate clean, why wouldn't anybody pay? That's my personal opinion, but we'll go around. Matt?
My opinion is income based, and that's why I was asking if we're, we're out here on the floor. Um, you know, we, one of the criteria traits here, you're all in town is responsibility, uh, that I think if I'm not mistaken. Uh, and then we're just going to wipe this clean, so. Part of the school lunch program, but also there was some payment for those accounts I'm fine with, uh, but if there wasn't, it I'm not in favor of just saying wipe out $5,400 this year and then get it next year. There should be some kind of analysis made to that, um, just to keep it, um, fair.
Mm-hmm. Fine.
Louis, um, do you know if like every attempt has been made to collect this money? I know with the shutdown, like, did people, are people even aware that they owe this money? Like, has there been several letters sent out and follow-up phone calls, you know? Cause I mean, I'm wondering if people, well, I know I owe money. I have no idea.
I was actually wondering that, why I landed.
I know, I know that there's been.
Every week, um, food service gives her a bookkeeper and they make phone calls, send letters. We make phone calls as well if they continue to report us. Um, we ask that they pay what they can. Of course, the first thing that we talk about is our free and reduced lunch application. Uh, we have, if needed, feel free to coordinator. Um, reach out to the families as well, um, but you can't turn a child away. We would never, we would get hungry, so they just keep charging.
But I, I know that's usual policy, but like with the shutdown, do we know, cause I would occasionally get those in the mail with like a balance. I'm just wondering, like, COVID and kind of the shutdown, like, I'm just wondering if there were some things. We can do one more round. Should we do one more round and come and see and the? Then you get the two numbers.
Do we have any time to discuss?
What's tomorrow's tomorrow?
That's pretty good, Louis.
Okay, Tim? Do you want to wait a little bit? Yeah, we're gonna, um, we're gonna discuss this further tonight. Louis, we're not going to be able to make a decision yet.
That's fine. I'm not sure if you asked me any questions, but the audio was really poor on the phone, so, um, it keeps going in and out.
Okay, well, Rutland Town is just not quite, um, ready to just say, okay, we're going to take care of the balance. Um, we have a few questions for administration. We're going to send out at least one more, well, I would say one more notice to the people that owe, um, and then we'll go from there. We'll make a final decision by, uh, over 12:00 meeting.
That's fine.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Louis?
No, I do not. Next week, next month, we'll start talking about budget.
Okay, geez, already? Okay. Well, thank you, Louis.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, um, director's orders, like I said, we are going to hold up to last, it's a discussion. I need approval of the minutes from March 9th and August 10th. I would come up with two for March and August. One, I was second for the approval of the two meetings.
Seconded.
Other any discussions, additions, changes, corrections? All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Chris? All right, uh, it won't be too long, as I promised, but, uh, there are three areas which I just want to talk about. First would be the professional developments, the fall orientation and service. Due to the late start this year, uh, Labor Day, we could we're able to get today's out with staff this year. And I know that, uh, you talk about staff, that some of us probably would have liked five or six more days, uh, as well, but uh, in agreement with our, you know, between the administration and the union, we agreed that, uh, five days, um, and a six day with the new teacher orientation would suffice to get it set up. And during this time, we've allowed our teachers, we've allowed PD to set up and them to get used to the different, uh, you know, materials, tech equipment, you know, things along those lines that would be necessary. It's got to be things up and running. I do think it was time well spent, um, but like I said, we just consider the unique situation around this. We probably would have used two or three weeks, and so it felt most beneficial. And I think that's something which, you know, at least I've talked about, uh, the future is, um, you know, this is something which we've never seen before. We didn't really have a, a plan for COVID health pandemic. Uh, in our grad school programs, administration, but, uh, I think it's something which we, we try to take the positive and, you know, the, uh, the lessons on this, I think one of the lessons is also just find a way to provide teachers with enough information for them to be ready to go. And, uh, maybe we have some of that anxiety that they, they have, but I do want to thank the, uh, you know, at least the instructional coaches for setting the PD. I think they did a phenomenal job of getting that, uh, week ready to go as well. So, uh, the school reopening, which we're now in a week two, um, and, uh, you know, knock on wood, we've, you know, an incident free, I know there have been a couple of schools around the state that have had some, uh, a couple of cases, you know, a couple of things, but, uh, things have been relatively smooth, uh, you know, as with anything, you know, we've been asked to re-engineer a school, uh, just heard of. But, uh, you know, we've had a couple of glitches, a couple of bumps in the road, things along those ways, but I do want to thank first and foremost our, our teachers, uh, particularly at Rutland Town School. We've done a phenomenal job. I think, um, last spring when, uh, you know, we just basically said we were shut down a school, and guess what? We're going to move to full remote. Uh, the teachers did a phenomenal job quickly, you know, you know, just, uh, you know, just assembling all the resources and doing the best they possibly could of the unique sex circumstances. And I think they've done another phenomenal job. Um, but I do, you know, like I said, my, my concern obviously is, uh, you know, self-care. Uh, I think, you know, it's, I think, as we look at our, our teachers, you know, that they, they thank us professionally, especially one where they put, uh, others before themselves. And as we look at, you know, the amount of time and effort that they've put, you know, towards, you know, students in classrooms, I do get concerned sometimes that they, you know, don't necessarily get themselves last. And I think that's something as we move forward, uh, I just would encourage them to continue to find ways to do, you know, self-care and, you know, take care of, you know, the needs they have and reach out to Debbie and Sarah as well. But, uh, you know, the, the reopening has been very smooth, uh, and that's because of the fact that the teachers have done a phenomenal job of making it so. Parents and everyone else. So, uh, I do want to thank Debbie and Sarah as well for all the work they've done a year, a few years ago, tunnel working on the seams. Um, you know, of course, the summer, I didn't really have a great, uh, you know, so just didn't, you know, start the school year off exhausted, but as I said, things have been, been great. And I said, there have been some glitches, have been some hiccups, have been some issues, and I think we are addressing those right now. We have plans in place that uh, you know, each day, hopefully the day before, that's our ultimate goal. Um, I know that the question that I was asked about when we will look to move or shift to a, a new phase, uh, that's what we're on a wait and see. So, you know, the state, uh, are still in step two. Uh, we might see a shift to maybe step three by this week, and we're gonna, reason I say this, because athletics kicks off next week. Uh, high schools and, uh, if we're not in step three, then some of the athletic programs can't keep going. So if things are going well, I would not be surprised to see the state, you know, move, you know, to move to step three relatively quickly, but just because we moved to step three doesn't mean we necessarily have to move to a five-day model, it's yet. I think one of the things that we want to be cautious of and careful is that we don't move, uh, too quickly. And then we just have to just make sure that, you know, the building administration, you know, the union, the teacher staff, we have all the information that if, if one we do move to that student and staff, so. That's really about it. I mean, it's just been, you know, most of the summer's been about reopening and just, uh, getting things ready to go, so. But it is, like I said, it's a, it is a, you know, game day situation that we do, you know, like I said, we have good plans in place and good, uh, procedures, you know, for if things would happen, so.
Thank you. I think, what, what a, here to come in as the superintendent. Um, I know maintenance has been all elsewhere. I've got to tell you, I appreciate everyone that has been working so hard. I know the remote, um, is a little different than it was last spring, um, that I haven't heard much about it. I think it's going very well. Of course, it's on the second week, but principals report.
Sure. Um, so this was from our meeting from before, so class numbers may have just shifted a little bit. Uh, we have a little less now than 70 remote students. 64, yeah, Debbie took a peek. We've had some kids come back in, which is great. Uh, we would love to welcome more students to come in face to face, um, if they're able to do that. Um, as most of you know, we've been staggering arrival and dismissal, which has been going well. We're keeping a close eye on that and hoping that we'll be able to extend our instructional day here shortly. Um, you want to talk about music?
Sure. For, um, our middle school students, we can't really have a band because of, uh, we can't use the instruments, so the two music teachers have gotten together, so set up a chorus, agreeing a music appreciation course for, um, for students in five through eight. So Mr. Adat and Mr. Woodman have done a great job putting something together that they do with their students so that everyone can have access to that. So, um, they'll be, um, creating music loops, um, composing music using a special rotation software. Learners in this, uh, music history, elements of music, and listening to all types of music as well. So everything's going to be done in class, so it's not extra for these students to take home with them, but so far so good. So that's a great piece of the time to make sure they sell some to instruction. Um, everyone's using, I mean, one of the things that we've been amazed at, all of our students wearing their masks has been unbelievable. You know, we worried about having issues and, you know, everyone's wanting to remind someone, but no one's given us a great, they're really, they're terrific. Um, in terms of the building, we're also complying with the composting law, so we have composting buckets. We have to add to what we're doing. We have composting buckets in, in every classroom. We put them outside all the way after lunch and they get picked up each day, so we're taking care of that. Uh, we have plenty of hand sanitizer and, uh, plenty of supplies for each classroom. Kelly Trey has been great for getting all the teachers that what they need and very creative in terms of how he's finding ways to supply these things when some of them are, are hard to come by. Um, we refinished our gym floor, our slate entryways, and installed a new fence. Very nice. So things, the, the building looks great. He's, uh, very, um, observable, wandering around the building three times a day, cleaning all the touch points outside, taking care of the, uh, the play structures as well. Um, and helping clean toys for pre-classes and stuff. A lot going on. And I want to thank all the, the maintenance staff. They've been great. Really great, and as well as our teachers.
Yeah, they have worked so hard and it's been, um, amazing to see, uh, everybody work together and they're really, I mean, between remote learners, communicating with families, teaching their classroom um, under this pandemic, um, they're doing an amazing job, amazing job. So I just want to, you know, encourage families again, if any questions, please contact teachers directly, um, any concerns, you know, please let us know. But thank you for everybody for being patient. All the families with, again, pick up and dismissal and all that's awesome.
Yeah. I admire you all. I know there was a lot to do in a way, the system kept changing, the state kept changing, there are lines that it really wasn't set the goal in for days before, so. And buses are doing well?
Buses are doing well. Mm-hmm. Yep. Thank you all of those families that are able to transport their kids. We have, we can provide transportation via bus, but we're trying to keep those members well for obvious reasons. Um, so we appreciate families that are able to do that. Thank you.
I was amazed, um, hoping that of course, first day is always, there's no way you could have gotten neutral here, but, um, I heard, that was a little rough.
Yes, it was. Yes.
I heard second week, uh, you only need the SRO, you're all set, people are really being good and it's traffic's moving and I just have, admire all of you for doing that. I thought that would be the hardest part.
Yep.
So I did wonder that. Okay, personnel, nominations. Okay. In front of you, we get a packet. Um, there has been a resignation received from David O'Grady. And most of you have not heard about Mr. O'Grady. I don't even think he was here a week. But.
Is he here a day?
I don't even know, but it doesn't matter. He designed it August 27th. So do I have any motion to accept the resignation of Mr. O'Grady?
Make a motion to accept their resignation?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, um, next on the agenda will be the contract recommendations.
Make a motion that we approve the contract recommendations as presented in the packet on this one page that I have.
I'll send it. I just had a quick question. Is Amanda, or Michael, is that, should that be bumped up or is that considered?
I think, cause we, um, on March 9th, we discussed this, I think, because that, um, coaching position needs less than the other coaching positions.
Right.
Is it just, yeah.
It's less days.
Okay, we have one motion on the floor for the contract recommendations. Any more discussion? All in favor? All right. Any? unanimous? Thank you. Vacancies? I love that silence. Okay, moving right on. Non-union pay increases or, uh, pay discussions, does that need to be on there? Can you say, I don't think so?
No, just carry on.
Okay, going to take that off. Uh, chairs report. I don't have much. I was kind of waiting until we had our first meeting after opening the school, with my fingers crossed that it would be going as well as it is. The only thing I have to report is that Tim and then I as chairman did sign, and Chin Hill is now not ours. It has been bought. Um, I believe it's, the check has been, have you filled the receipt yet or?
No, you told, you told us to expect it. We have it.
Okay, I know they're sending it. Okay, they're sending it in, um, and then it'll go Louis. It is, I think, almost eight, almost eight, $8,000 that we end up with after the term fees, whatever. Um, and I want to thank everybody. Matt and I, or mostly Matt, have been off and on all summer with extensions from this gentleman. Um, and, uh, but it's a done deal, and it went up to literally the night before I signed the
This is going to be done, given unfortunately.
Right. I don't think he dared, he had asked for another couple thousand off the court, but I told him, well, I'd bring it in, but, you know, that's your risk because you may decide not to sell it to you. So anyways, it's gone. So Chin Hill is no longer ours.
Can I ask you about it? Huh?
Can I ask you about it?
I don't remember. If you give me a minute, I can.
Yeah, I don't think, no, we approved the contract when it came through here from our statement, so we wanted to have a discussion.
I don't know, the next one makes David.
David Nelson.
Yeah, that's it.
And I didn't know who was Louis. And I guess he fixes up the buildings around Rutland County and the surrounding.
And so anybody that's, um, just curious, uh, Chin Hill, um, he wants to convert it or is planning on converting it to a three-bedroom house. So that's what you're looking at. So, um, apparently everything is in line, all the contracts, all, everything he needs is all set. So we no longer have that, um, kind of sad in a way, but we, that will be coming into the coppers hopefully soon. I do want to say that after our last non-union meeting, um, I did walk with Matt around down back, um, down the trails to see what was there. Um, phenomenal, phenomenal, phenomenal work that's been done. And if anybody has a chance to walk down, when you go by the baseball field, there's one that goes down to the left, heads out west. Um, and I'm not going to say anything, but there's a tree there. And I have been, Matt and the rest of, cutting down. Matt is in favor of not cutting it down. Also, it's been trimmed and everything. Alive animal, but phenomenal job out there. And that did bring up a question because even from the, what they've been working on, as you know, like weeds and trunks bill and regrow. Um, I don't think Matt wants to do this as his side project or responsibility.
Thank you.
But we do need some more work. Um, right now, I don't think we've always just kind of relied on our maintenance to be able to do whatever. Um, but I would like maintenance to look at some kind of a plan so that we can look to make sure none of that's probably how he would be as a man.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't too bad. The nice thing is Carpenter Costin just went around and cut all the way from the playground all the way to the baseball field. Uh, that included weed whacking around the whole perimeter of the field. It was $200. So whether it came down on our side or the thousands or it was general maintenance of the school. So I don't think it's part of the, you know, plan back there necessarily, but I think the bigger problem is, I think for the school, you know, especially if we're going to start using it now back. We've asked this before, uh, but who's in charge of the space back there?
Well, that's what I mean.
Brand new baseball field back there that's a nine-legged.
Yeah, I mean, it is our problem.
Oh, no, I understand. So, and so it, it took Jeff off the lawn mower or whoever was mowing, but I just remember Jeff was kind of iconic here as he mowed around. We always had the maintenance staff mow the lawn. We then subcontracted that out a few years ago, um, and had that done. So now we have someone like Carpenter Costin comes in industrial and takes care of the lawn and takes care of the weed whacking, but baseball fields is not really their job and, you know, directing them. And it really is left up in the air as to whose responsibility is it to go upgrade that baseball field? Whose responsibility is to go above and beyond and, so, and that's how we kind of got here, I think, in a way. And now it's taken off even more wings with the hockey rink, uh, that we have out there.
Well, and that's one of the problems, Matt. We used to have just the baseball field, and then we would use just playing field for popper and lacrosse, whatever. But now we've expanded it and we actually have, thinking of, so we have more fields. When it was with baseball, um, the rec department had done that, um, because they were using it mainly, they were using it for the rec department for the town. Um, so now that, you know, we're using it also, it's just something we need to look into to see if, well, how we're going to handle that maybe, you know, I'm sure our discussion with, um, Mike Rose, um, because he would know, um, I mean, we can't really as a parent of us to think that Joe is going to do this, but continue to do all of it. because he would know, I mean, we can't, really as a parent of us, to think that we're just going to do this, but continue to do all of it. What you have a conversation with Mike and Kelly, and they figure out, you know, that wasn't high on the list. We had lots of stuff to do.
Well, of course.
But it is on the list.
Well, I'm just saying, with budget time coming, we're going to have to do something. Any other questions and comments?
Yeah, I just had a comment on that. Just like a bit of a thought, and I think it should be clear compared to like the maintenance piece, just so that when we want some extra support, we know what's already being done. And I know we've reached out to the community and a lot of, you know, kind of, you know, quick pitches here and there, which I encourage. But I would also, I'd love to see the school embrace this piece. Like, for instance, they go out and do cleanups, you know, and Pine Hill Park and stuff like that for that final week at school. I've seen youth groups do the same thing. I mean, I have a relative that does a youth group in Delaware. They came up and actually did some clearing and pine help for whatever reason. So, you know, I'm not suggesting to do this next week, but as we get in the spring, you know, we want to get outdoors again, you know, whether it's a science-based thing, or a math-based thing, or something that could get the kids out there and kind of take ownership of that as well. I think it's just to be cool for them to take ownership and, you know, kind of breathe that appreciation of that space as their own and make, you know, take all the support of that too. Excellent.
And thank you again.
Oh, yeah, no problem. I was just going to say, actually, last thing, I was just, I was, I think I was telling Debbie, but someone had said to me the other day, we've been working on it since May, come down, they're probably 20 hours a week, and I help the owners when they come, or Kyle Taylor, he shows up. Anyway, I got a text from someone the other day. He said, hey, I just walked the trail. It looked great. You know what? You need some signs out here. And I'm like, I just got some cotton rucks for three months and far more your fence. But anyway, actually, I was just thinking about it. If I get around to it this winter, it's a winter time project before the spring, we do need to get some signs out there. And I heard the cross country is using it, but some people are wandering around, and then there is no, even a directional sign as though. So it looks like I got about $300-ish in the budget, and there's a place called Makerspace. I found out Pine Hill Park is using, they're using a Makerspace down in Rufflin City. I don't know what they cost, but at least we got a few hundred bucks maybe to get started with some stuff. And I don't know who to chat with, maybe Mike and.
Probably Mike, and then see what it will run and whatever.
And, yeah, I don't think they're going to be expensive, and then I heard through the grapevine, I don't know if this is true or not, but we did cover one family over on Grover who has their backyard pretty close to the road. We covered $600 in trees for them to put up. I expect in the future, we're going to start seeing some pretty heavy use. And one of the reasons, we're walking right by their backyard, I can look at their back door and, you know, throw a rock out and hit it. So I thought.
Don't throw rocks, please.
But I thought we should have that fence up, but I think we're going to see some more use in the future, and that's why I talked to them about it. And that I think in two years, three years, there's going to be a lot more people out there. I was here the other day, people poked up out of the woods. I now know there's kids from Grover riding their bikes over. My son left, and I actually went over the Grover side, and people are starting to figure it out despite the lack of signs, and they're figuring out what's happening. But I understand that our connection between Rufflin Town and Northwood Park, which is separated by a couple of hundred feet, has been given a green light, but nothing's been reduced to paper. So someone has located, so it's looking as if the trails out back are going to be hooked to Northwood, but probably within the next year, six months. And when that happens, if people continue on to Northwood Park, the grade they are, they're going to be back here behind the school, and, you know, it's going to be used an awful lot, I think, once that extension happens. And getting down to, or literally down to Route 7 is not very difficult, about two hours' time. We didn't cut the brush, but I know Green Mountain Power would give us the authority to, and it's just going to take one tractor, one pass, and we can be down to power transfer station at Route 7 just by leasing it. So I anticipate in the future, fire in our highway department will be connecting down on Route 7 by the water tower, probably with Post Road. Those conversations will start this winter. And, but anyway, so, and I felt it was, you know, necessary to give someone $600 worth of trees so they can start building up a buffer for the possible people that are going to be back there. But we may see some changes on the Rufflin Town side in next year if it connects to Northwood Park, but the traffic will increase, because a lot of people are using the park up there. And if that just continues right down the road, we will have a lot more people here in our backyard.
And I just want to thank this landlord and landlord, because they are, they're the ones that are in the discussion with that one landlord, rent owner. And as Matt said, it's been verbally approved, they're just not going to be writing right now. That has been our whole work from going from here up to Northwood. So that looks like a thing ironed out. I appreciate everybody's help on it. Old business, and we don't have any old business? New business? Now, Sarah, as far as upcoming meetings, if you want to tell them what we have, what you want to do, we want teachers in here for virtual.
Yeah, we just thought, I didn't know if you wanted to see a couple of teachers' Google classrooms, some of the task calendars that they're sharing. You can either send a link, so you can look at a couple, or we can have a couple of teachers show them to you, something more than a few minutes.
And the link, but.
The link exists. Why don't we send the link, and then if we have a bunch of questions or anything, we can ask them to come. And, okay, that's awesome. Does anyone else have any other business?
Is their school closed, Sarah?
Yes, right?
Yes.
Okay, everyone that's on telephone, I appreciate you listening in tonight. Our next on the agenda is going to be an executive session. Do I have any questions?
A motion to go to the executive session, discuss confidential school information, we're having the lunch. What's the other basis?
The other one is financials.
And financial, confidential financial.
Wait a second. Okay, that's clean. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all. Next meeting is right here, Dan.